I'd like to call to order this work study of Independent School District 624. I would ask the clerk to please call their role.
Arcan.
Here.
Floyd.
Here.
Allison.
Here.
Your master.
Here.
Strike Coach Ebsen.
All right, thank you very much. Let's move into our first discussion item V1, 2023-2024 Course Proposals. Ms. Babish.
Good evening. Allison, members of the board, Dr. Kastmercheck, we are here tonight to look at our new course proposals. And I've invited some esteemed colleagues to be able to share a little bit about the course proposals. So just a couple reminders about what grounds us in new course proposals. We look to our world's best workforce goals, and we're going to hear more about those tonight. But really to the goal of all students college or career-ready by graduation. So as we think about using this frame around new course proposals, we really look to see that the proposals align with the standards. We look to our industry partners during our advisory meetings. And we also consider perspectives from employers, post-secondary institutions, and students. Teacher survey students to see where their interests lie. And we also look to our strategic plan for guidance. And finally, I do want to also bring up, as we think about providing equitable access to rigorous education for all of our students. And we utilize the equity decision-making protocol when we're looking at new course proposals or changes in course proposals. And just to highlight those four questions, just to remind you, as we think about the questions we're asking, the first question, how does this help to provide opportunities to students who have been marginalized within the system in the past? How does this ensure equitable access for all students? How does this help eliminate barriers for students? And how does this ensure that the same rigorous standards for academic performance exist for all students? So we also take into consideration our career pathways. And as we define what it means to be career-ready, we look to ensure access for all of our students. So we think about our career pathways programming. It provides coursework that focuses on industry-specific skills and essential employability skills. It also looks on hands-on experiential learning opportunities. It looks for opportunities to gain credentialing and our college credit while in high school. Opportunities to connect students to industry and post-secondary options. And also to provide students to enter the workforce with skills in high-demand areas. And then finally, as we think about our strategic planning, our future of learning, especially in our secondary world, unifying our two campuses at the high school, really looking at best practice for both space design and programming, and thinking about how educating and empowering our educators to help all learners. Also looking at our students' need for not only today but the future. And then finally, looking at how those new learning spaces, how we can maximize what we hope for all of our kids when it comes to the culture, the climate of the school, relationships between peers, relationships between adults in the building. And so finally, just as we also think about new course proposals, things we take into consideration, student interest and enrollment trends, and then also looking at school capacity to implement new coursework, including implications for staffing, scheduling, and facilities. So at this time next year, this is going to be a really fun meeting because there's going to be lots of streamlining and changes. So looking forward to that for next year. So here we go. I have a colleague here, Nicole McGarthway. She is a social studies teacher at the High School South Campus. And she's going to talk a little bit about our course change in social studies.
Hi, thank you for having me here tonight. Just a little background, I've been teaching in the district for 15 years now. And I teach economics and psychology. Econ is really my passion, and I'm really excited about this potential course offering. We've been offering AP Microeconomics and AP Macroeconomics quite some time. And starting last year, I approached my building principal to ask about switching to the CIS program. One of the things that's really exciting about the CIS program is students basically will be assessed after the period they take the course. I'm not sure if you're familiar with AP Economics is a semester course. And so if students take it in the fall, they don't take the test until the following May. So there's a pretty big gap between learning the material and taking the exam and being assessed on the material. So it creates a little bit of an equity gap, I guess I would say, for students who don't have the resources and time to come in Saturday or who can't stay after school. So the thing I'm really excited about with CIS is it's more like a traditional course where they're doing U of M coursework in my classroom at South Campus. But then we'll actually be assessing them on their work of applying an economic way of thinking, which is another really exciting part of the course. So I'm not sure, again, how familiar are you with the AP Econ curriculum? It's very theory-based, which is important in the study of economists. But there's not a whole lot of room for applying it to their world and to issues. So another neat aspect of the course as it's offered now is students, for their summit of assessments, do a policy group on an area that they're interested in. So they look at, you know, what are the policy business are, their desire, excuse me, and what has worked, what hasn't worked, and they actually make a proposal of their own. So it's a fantastic opportunity for students not only to gain college credit, but to really practice doing what economists do. Oh, yeah, also, yes, thank you. Obviously, with the AP exam, there's a fee for students. And of course, that fee can be waived if they're receiving free reduced lunch. From my understanding, CIS students pay no cost. So that's another benefit, removes another barrier for students joining. Yeah. Yeah, are there specific questions you have about the CIS program? There's so much I wrote down that I wanted to talk about because I'm really excited about it. But what can I tell you?
Yeah, we can pass for questions.
Yeah, any questions for Ms. Babish, Dr. Arcan?
I have other questions, I want to say that I like the direction we're going. A couple of reasons. With the CIS course, I can have a bad day. So with the AP, I'm on the AP test day, if I have a bad day and I don't do well, I don't get the credit. Plus, the law may have a transcript of credit. I think that for the Midwest, I'm here all the time. It takes somewhere because many people always can't do that with. So but I like with them, what I'm hearing is we're really going away from a level-two question and answer to a level-three and a level-four question. So we're really making a very big change in this program, which we want for our students to live in their world. So I'm just, you're doing a great job going in that direction, I totally support it.
Thank you, yeah. CIS definitely looks at more in-depth understanding than understanding all things.
Great, great. So now we're going to move into middle school social studies and streamlining our coursework. So I have Christina Peer here, our principal at Semerance Middle School, and Lindsay Maso, one of our social studies teachers.
All right, so this is the next step for middle school and detracking. We have already detracked science and language arts. And so social studies is next. Sixth grade social studies has never been tracked. So it's only seventh and eighth grade. We've had challenge by choice for at least a decade in middle school. And so when you look at academic abilities, these courses look the same. So right now, we have regular and enriched social studies in seventh and eighth grade. But the range of student abilities in those classes is the same. And so teachers are already differentiating to challenge the top students and to make sure that they're supporting students who need a little bit more support. So the logical next step is to just provide all students with the same rigorous course. Lindsay will talk a little bit about how it works right now in sixth grade and what she likes about that.
Yeah, so I have been teaching sixth grade. This is my seventh year, and I've never had an enriched option. So I've always had kind of a mixed bag of kids just based on what the schedule works with. And personally, I prefer that because you get such a better range of kids that aren't like moved because their parents want them and enriched or kind of based more on behavior. But they have more diverse perspectives. They're able to learn things from each other based on the experiences that they've had or haven't had. They come in with not a ton of social studies background from elementary school. So it's really helpful to like all start on the same page and not put someone ahead because they're a good student or whatever it might be. But there's always opportunities to create those enrichments or challenges and those supports for the low kids at the same time with the same low kid. I personally prefer it that way, and I think it's definitely more equitable and removes a lot of barriers to rigor for our students who maybe aren't tracked into those classes.
Any questions? So just a quick question. So then, if this goes through, then the only discipline in middle school that will be tracked is math.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
And that's just because the way that math is structured in middle school and high school, it just makes more sense to?
Yeah, I'll keep working on it, but I haven't found a solution yet. Yeah, yeah. More math for everyone, I'm working on it.
I don't know, I'm thrilled that this whole discussion has been about social studies classes. Middle school and high school, it's great. Any other questions, Dr. Arcan?
I don't know, but I just want to say I'd like the idea that we're stopped with being gatekeepers and actually providing an opportunity. This rigor, providing, we provide an opportunity. And so by taking that gate away, it's just going to help all our students.
Absolutely. Ms. Floyd.
So I know there's several different areas, several different ways that we try to offer supports to these students who are going into these classes. Can you kind of go through, remove some of those? Because, you know, we've got the AP classes and the CIS classes. Some kids are going in there and they're super successful, and others are. They're struggling. We want them to have rigor. What, how are we, what are the things we're doing to backfill that?
Sure, so there's things that teachers can do within the classroom to make sure that they're setting every student up for success. And then there's other things, like other add-ons that we can do. And I think there's people here that are going to talk about Avid. That's an additional course that actually supports students who want to push themselves to take more rigorous classes.
But to take Avid, you've got to give up another.
Yeah, that's true. And so, yeah, so I'm just, you know, telling you that there's a lot of different ways. But yeah, definitely Lindsay and I can talk about some, what are some supports that we put in place to help students reach a higher level?
Yeah, so I think focus note-taking, like that's a strategy that all teachers can implement. It's an avid strategy, so not necessarily an avid kid has to take it. But focus note-taking, different organizational strategies for materials for time, like actually teaching those soft skills that, at least when I was a student, weren't really taught, like how to study, things like that. Giving kids those tools to be able to manage their learning, especially when they're confused. Collaborative study groups is a really, another good way to like review for content. Or when they're struggling, it teaches them how to do that with their peers and solve their own problems. So there's tons of strategies that teachers can use to support kids when they're in a rigorous course, especially if that course is challenging to the student. I don't know, anything?
Yeah, I was going to say, at South Campus 1, North Campus 2, we have bare time daily now with 30 minutes. So that's an opportunity for students to come in during the school day to work with teachers. That's one of the support. And then I would just echo everything you said as well. There's ways, like within my AP classroom, it's kind of what you asked about, where we might look at, okay, is the difficulty understanding the content? Or is it the way that the AP asks the question? So kind of determining who needs to work on understanding how these questions are written and kind of the tape and the test, of which won't be an issue in CIS, but.
Even if they come in during bare time, a large class, you could have several students in there that entire time for, you know, positive.
Right.
So is there something besides the bare time? I mean, because I just know that we've got some kids that really want to learn, and they just, they're struggling.
Yeah.
And it may not be that they can't do work, but there's study skill issues, there's organizational issues, there's that kind of thing.
Yeah.
That's not necessarily what you're teaching in class, but those are the things that we fall behind on.
Right. And I would say that, and I can't speak for all teachers, but we'll talk about in my class, what are some different resources? If you are stuck on this and you don't have a teacher available. So talking about different resources, they can come in before, after school. A lot, you know, working on those test skills that we don't necessarily have time to teach during the period. So, I mean, I think that's obviously going to be a teacher-by-teacher basis. But I know with my own students, I'm almost happy to help out with those supports. And how does that mean?
I think also there's really been an effort with principals to work with teachers around professional learning and have teachers help lead different strategies during professional development days. You know, Lindsay, you talked about focus note-taking. And maybe you want to talk a little bit about what that means? Because I think that's a freight scaffolding tool that kids can use. And then I hear kids in college using that. And, you know, I didn't have that in college, kind of my own, to try to take notes. But maybe give us a specific example of focus note-taking.
A summary briefly of focus note-taking is based on the idea that when we take notes, if alls we do is we write down the notes while we're in class, we forget like 50% of what we wrote down. So it's important that we go back repeatedly and do something with our notes and interact with our notes in order to put that percentage up. Every time we go back to our notes, it's going to go up. So focus note-taking, in my class, I'll give students time to go back to their notes and highlight main ideas, circle key words, write down questions that they have or connections to themselves, the world, things they've learned before. And then typically, they write a summary that refers back to like the essential question or the whole of whatever those notes were. It's a time investment to give students that time to go back. But if we're doing that, they're going to remember more in the long run, and they're not going to be struggling. But it's definitely a strategy that kids take with them. And they can apply in any class, which I think is really valuable.
Well, and as we roll out BAR program, how does that will tailor to that?
So that's what, we have a system-wide thing that we're doing too in terms of our multi-tiered systems of support in BAR. And so what that means is each student is educators, teams of educators, and principals are talking about students much more often. And so we're teaching students some advocacy skills around making sure that they are asking for help. We also have ways of indicating that they're not following track. And so all of that coupled together are things that we didn't always have as systematic. And so BAR really is making sure we're building up strength and helping educators feel like they have the supports to reach kids. And so like, talking about, if you're here talking about, or they're in class and they're trying and trying and trying and still not seeing success, they get to work with teams of educators to say, okay, what are you seeing? And maybe you're connecting with the student so that they can really have that in ways that we haven't been able to do system-wide in the way that we can now. Both of our middle schools have BAR. We have it at the ninth grade, and we're really thinking about now as we unify, how can we build on the parts that our educators are most impressed with, with the 10 through 12?
It's not tenth grade too, I suppose, tenth grade too.
Not the actual teaming part of it, where teachers share kids. That's specific to ninth grade. And then you, most schools try to figure out how to work our extra showing in the conventional, there's a campus, we're almost done. So that, how can we close those aspects when we look at our master's schedule? It is giving teachers kind of practice for each other. But we have it down for ninth grade. Thank you.
And Dr. Newmaster.
I think White Bear does an awesome job of giving many kinds of challenges to kids. And they have done it for decades as my own kids went through and took college in the schools and things like that. But what I remember the biggest shock was getting that first college textbook. And you, if you've never taken an honors class before, because they pushed things like that, and now you've got the midst of pushing everybody. I just remember many kids, because I checked them out in the media center, and they'd talk about them and come in there and study after school. And they'd say, this is, are you reading the whole thing? Are you taking notes as you read it? You know, there's sorts of things you talk about. But I just remember that being the biggest challenge and the biggest barrier for a student that's never read anything of the magnitude. Because I remember microeconomics when it was taught by Paul Seba. And the kids would come in and go, whoa. And other classes, a college textbook, it's the first time you get one. You think, I'm going to read this and understand this. So, you know, that would be my biggest concern, if they don't. And you want everybody to have that experience. But somehow, I think I worry not everybody gets that practice in that kind of intense, technical, dense reading before they hit their first college in a school or AP.
I feel really confident with the professional learning when we look at critical reading skills and close reading strategies where we are having, we're teaching kids how to mark the text and being able to go back multiple times through a text to take notes, to make meaning of the notes and the text. And so that, I absolutely agree. That was something that, you know, when we went to college, I know I didn't have that, that we are very intentional and doing throughout, for sure, for secondary. And elementary, they really do do it. They may call it something different unless you're at Lake Eyers Elementary, which is an Avid school. But that has, I would say, since I've been here in the last five, six years, that really has been an emphasis on those reading, critical reading strategies that we've been teaching, you know, our teachers are teaching to the kids.
As we recruit everyone to have the most challenging classes I can have. That's one of the things that I think is the highest, I don't know what you'd call it, barrier to jump over. And I remember in many books, reading them twice, underlining them. I always bought them. I needed to underline and take notes on the edges and things like that, especially if it was Avid. But anyway, no, it sounds good because that would be my worry about scaffolding for that sort of a task. Thanks.
And Dr. Arcan.
And one of the things that I'm hearing in the summaries in my head, as you start teaching these courses and you start looking for intervention, you're going to deposit those, and as somebody else comes along, okay, this intervention won't here. Can we use it again or adapt? And I think that's what you find out as you move. You start seeing where the interventions are needed, and they're going to start knowing that as you teach more. Here are the trouble spots, students are troubled, and here's what we're going to address them. And that's what we need to do in trouble, so it sounds like they're on the right track.
All right, thank you all very much.
Can I, sorry?
Oh, sorry, Ms. Thompson.
Um, so I've been interned at a neighboring school, and they have BAR and some other things that they do there too. And when the students are falling behind, they have a group in there that has mentors where these students can go to and they can get the extra help they need. And I know that our class sizes have gone up pretty good this year, in, at least in the middle schools that I've been hearing. So how do we ensure that the students who are falling behind or who aren't able to be as easily adaptable to the note-taking, that they're going to get there? Like, because we can't overburden our teachers. Or, I mean, if there's classrooms that have 30-plus students in them, it's hard to ensure that they're hitting every single student. What are our other supports? Do we have any other support system? That's not just solely based on the teacher having to, you know, be responsible for, you know, in middle school, several different classrooms with that many students. What is our, how do we capture those students that maybe are falling behind and ensure that they are going to catch up and that they understand it and can carry it forward?
So I'd say it is mostly the teachers. Our counselors are super supportive, engage with students as well. But, you know, it is through the BAR process that teachers will identify students and say, okay, we're concerned about this child not turning in work. Let's talk about what the reasons could be. All that child's teachers are at the table talking about it. Oh, is the organization, okay, who's going to work with them on organization? Okay, the advisory teacher, here's the plan, we'll check back in a couple weeks. So the teachers are the ones with the feet on the ground, they're the ones on the front line. They are, they are, they are the ones who are engaged in that work. And yes, we are asking a lot of them.
Yeah.
And they really, they work hard, they really do it for our students.
I think that, oh.
Well, I was just going to say, from a teacher's perspective, class sizes are crazy. But I think if a kid is not understanding like a concept or something like that, you can also leverage the expertise of the kids in the room. Because when you have a mixed bag of kids, you're going to have kids who get it and who are like on it and know exactly what they're talking about. And when you give them that leadership opportunity to work with, like say in a collaborative study group where they're solving their problem, and that kid gets to help other kids learn and explain, not only is that kid getting an enrichment in being the teacher and kind of leading others, but that's going to help the kids too. And I know when I have peer leaders in my room, it's amazing. And it really helps bring kids together to work towards that kind of goal. So I think if we're talking about just like a lack of understanding of content, that's something that's not on the teacher, but is good for other kids, if that makes sense.
Yeah, thank you.
Another question, I do remember, not that long ago, when I was at North Campus, we had after-school tutors, I think they were hired, was through Avid? Yep, yep. And they had a steady stream of kids. And they were there at least three nights a week until the after-school bus, which cuts out the kid that can't stay, they have to go home and babysit or something. But they were, are they still available, is that program used?
So yes, and I think most successful that we found, and I think over at South Campus, I don't want to steal their thunder when they talk about Avid. But we have the Math and Chem Center as well over at South Campus, who are tutors, are also tutors. And so they do a great job of building a community with students that need extra support in math and chemistry. And so we have those extra supports that they're available during the day. You know, and I think just our efforts all around. I know we have talked as much about secondary with professional learning, but really focusing on universal instruction and what we're doing this year around a guaranteed viable curriculum and really having common instructional strategies that all teachers are using. Because then we have the common language among the teachers and then the students as well. Note-taking, so trying to eliminate kind of some of those invisible barriers of just not having common language, we're really being purposeful around our professional learning. So I'm hoping we can, we can talk, I could talk more about that this year and that effort that we're making to have more focus around that common language and strategies as well, which I think will help too.
Okay, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to our discussion item V2, Best Workforce and Achievement and Integration Update. Dr. Gillespie.
Good evening, I have friends with me.
I'll have math and more than people.
Yeah, I'm there, I'm the principal of Willow Lane. Good to see so many of you, thank you for having me.
And I'm Dr. Mona Fiero. I'm the Assistant Director of Teaching and Learning, focused mostly on assessment, data, and evaluation. Well, tonight, we come every year and update you on our World's Best Workforce Goals and Achievement and Integration Goals. And tonight, I'm going to do our update a little bit differently. And so all of you received our official report that we have, and it's posted on our website. We will go through those goals so that you, again, we reiterate them. But I have three areas that I want to showcase of work that highlights into the line towards our World's Best Workforce and Achievement and Integration. But I really think it's important that we get more and more of the work that we're doing in our district in front of you as the board, but also as a chance to tell and share with the public what we're doing. And so we have work that we're going to talk about from Birch Lake Elementary, around their third-grade reading scores. Matt's here, Willow Lane, as you know, gets highlighted every year as our racially identified old school. But we're really excited to not only talk about some of the exciting achievement scores that we're seeing out of Willow, but also give Matt an opportunity to share a lot of the great work that's there. And then at the end, I have some friends in the audience who are still here that were talking about Avid. And so I learned last time, because my presentations are kind of lengthy, that we're going to wrap and finish Willow and have Matt. that we're gonna wrap and finish Willow and have Matt have an evening and then invite my other guests up here. So. Matt, Matt, they did paper X. So as a refresher, World's Best Workforce has five goal areas and that all students are ready for school, all third graders. Get my presentation up here. All third graders can read at grade level, that all racial and economic achievement gaps between students are closed. All students are ready for career and college, and all students graduate from high school. And then we qualify for achievement and integration dollars. And we were in our third year of our most recent plan, so this year we will write and rewrite a new plan. We qualify for that because we have a racially identifiable school, which is, um, Willow Lane, but also because we were part of Equity Alliance and we had an adjoining district. And we did that with Roseville. And so we will continue that work and really help us to increase racial and economic integration, reduce our achievement disparities. And then they recently added a third area of increasing students' access to effective and diverse teachers. So I'm gonna have Melinda first talk about our goal area around making sure students are ready for school.
Great, good evening. So, uh, this was a baseline goal for us. We. Childhood screening and, um, TS gold, which is escaping me right. On our students being ready for school. So this is the first time we have used our Fastbridge suite of assessments. We call it Fastbridge, is our academic screener that we use, K eight, three times a year. Um, and so this was a baseline goal. Twenty-one, twenty-two was the second year that we had used that across our system. Okay, so before that, it was a little bit, um, piecemeal with our buildings, but now, um, in twenty, twenty, twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two, we use it across our system. So our goal was, um, that twenty-five percent of our White Bear Lake area preschool students. Literacy or the inverse of that is that seventy-five percent of our students would come in on track. And when we say White Bear Lake area preschool, we are using the enrollment of the students that come to the preschools that we, um, shaped the curriculum for. So, um, these are preschools that are in our early childhood centers and our elementary buildings. Um, the result was only nine percent of our White Bear Lake area school preschool students needed intense support and early literacy. So we've met that goal. And that's wonderful, that also means that we get to update that goal, um, for this year so that we have, um, a metric to to reach for. Um, so we, um, in, you know, with a feedback loop from our Systems Accountability Committee, we have landed on seventy-five percent of our White Bear Lake area preschool school students will enter kindergarten with an early reading composite score of thirty or higher. That is an increase, the the previous one was twenty-five or higher. And we clearly met that. If we had had it at thirty percent, sixty-nine percent of our students would have met that goal for this year.
Well, um, and if you recall, we, all of our early childhood teachers were trained in letters this past year. And so we're really excited and to be able to have met that goal, knowing that the interruption that our earliest learners experienced due to COVID is really a testament to the work of the leadership in our early childhood programs and our educators.
Okay, Ms. Boyd.
Just that includes the preschool program and, um, camera. So these are all feeders?
Yep.
Just those people, so they, they're at some other preschool, like that number.
We did look at that number, but it's not what we use for our World's Best Workforce.
Our next goal is our Read Well by Third Grade. Um, and we use our MCA scores for our third grade reading. And so our district goal is that sixty-eight percent of our students will meet or exceed the MCA goal by June of twenty-twenty-three. That is and was our goal pre-pandemic and the goal that I've maintained for us throughout. You'll see our district's score was fifty-four point six percent. And then you'll see each elementary score for their third graders there.
Um, and the reason that the online learning is not available is because our numbers of students in that grade band that took the MCA were too small to be able to report publicly.
So the school that I wanted to highlight, um, and really, oh, go ahead. Did you?
Oh, I was gonna, maybe you're gonna get to it, so I'll let you.
Oh, okay. The school that we're going to highlight is Birch Lake. And so Birch Lake is one that, um, really had a huge growth from their score from the year before. And something that I wanted to highlight, Birch Lake is a school that, when we do the entering screening data is on the, if you think about multi-tiered systems of support, when you're really working towards, you know, five percent of students needing that that most tier three intervention, Birch Lake is often an inverted triangle where many of their students qualify for the highest need. And so the work of their staff there to earn the sixty point six percent of students meeting or exceeding is huge, especially from the year before. Now, obviously, comparing apples to oranges because it's a different group of students. But, um, just the work that they've did, they did around that is really something that I wanted to make sure that we highlighted. When I talked with Jonathan, their principal, he talked a lot about how they, um, worked with the work around multi-tiered systems of support and use their collaborative inquiry teams. And so Linda's worked really closely with that, um, leadership group around that work and.
Yeah, so they have a variety of resources and strategies at their disposal. So we, when we report, we kind of report at the sort of thirty thousand foot view, right, or the ten thousand foot view? And we give you kind of those overarching numbers. Each building goes through each, um, each strand and each, um, subtest of the, uh, screening results and kind of looks at where all of the students are at by building and then by grade level and then even down to the, um, classroom. Um, so when they're talking about the strategies, resources here, for example, using the screening intervention report, when all the students in a classroom take the screening assessment, Fastbridge takes that data and produces what's called the screening intervention report. And among the things that are on that report are what skills as a class that class needs the most support in, and then provide suggestions for the teacher on an on instruction. So combining that with the information they get, uh, or the professional learning they've gotten through letters and other avenues, they are then able to target instruction around classes and then small groups to help in, um, increase their reading skills. Um, so what they did with that information then is use a mix of class-wide and small group interventions guided by the data. So, um, in a way, like, they focused in in that building in particular in a way that we hadn't necessarily done before to look at that whole class and like what that whole class needed. But then also working with small groups of students that maybe needed an extra support beyond that classroom. Um, and then they have an instructional coach, um, that also helped lead a lot of these discussions and consistently helped support them with their data as as time went on. Another thing they look at, once they implement those, um, interventions, they progress monitor, which means they do a little formative checks, sometimes weekly, sometimes bi-weekly, around the topics that they're teaching. And then they monitor and adjust that, um, intervention and then instructional coach has been a a big part of that. And then the literacy professional will help when they're talking about primarily is letters. But there are other things that that the building.
Ms. Thompson.
Um, I was just curious, and Matoska's score? And was that due to maybe, I know that last year when you reported, there was like a variation of like fourteen percent of students who opted not to take the reading test? Do we have, but what was, do we have a number for what Matoska was at last year?
Um, a proficiency rate or a participation rate?
Um, I guess the, what the score that we are seeing here.
So the, um, so just in more of it in general, you'll have to look up the specific information from Matoska. But, um, participation improved last year over twenty-twenty-one, but was not back to our pre-pandemic participation rate. So there is a little bit of factor in that. There's also the factor that, um, this group of students that's in third grade, if you recall, was in kindergarten when, um, when we were really deep into, um, the pandemic. So you have to kind of look at the scores for this group of students in that vein too. But I will, I would have to look at what the specific score for Matoska and for, um, both for participation and proficiency, and I can do that, but.
Just because there are intrabacular at school still, correct?
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's just a, to me, that's a really low number, to see that number and to see the comparison to the other schools.
Well, these would have all been from the third graders that went through kindergarten and kindergarten, so.
It's just a concerning.
Well, that is more, even more what, um, why it's so important the work that we're doing across schools and sharing the work. And we are doing that work, but yeah, I, you know, we can do it.
Want to just like, were there less students at that school or more students at that school who opted out? Or like, just to kind of get some more detail to why that number is like that.
What Lincoln is doing?
Yeah.
Yeah, really. Different schools.
Well, I'm really, Lincoln has done. Pulled out, um, the exploration program impacts the score just a little bit, but not, not as significantly as perhaps people would anticipate.
So how much of that is in that seventy percent number?
It's a couple of percentage points, it's not a lot. Um, you know, up to four percent. When I talk to the principal, what they've done and what we're doing at the system wide is really worked hard on their interventions. And so when we talk about multi-tiered.
So Matoska's proficiency rate in twenty-twenty-one was forty-one point three. And the participation rate, um, in twenty-twenty-two was ninety-three percent. We typically see, um, ninety-five or higher, um, in pre-COVID times.
Ms. Thompson.
So. To me, I mean, if it's a collaborative work that we're doing, I guess I'm, I look at the, that that number and it just says to me that there's something that's not like, are they not, what is happening there that is causing that number to be there this year? Because I would think, um, that the way Matoska, uh, being our school that is the intrabacular at school would have a number that would be higher than that. So what is happening there that is it not collaborating? Is there, um, I don't know, I I guess to me, I would like to know more about why that number is that way. Is it because the students are more, um, not used to sitting and taking the test on the computer kind of? Like, I don't, I don't know what it is, but it definitely says something is happening at Matoska. That, to me, seeing that number, um, it's just concerning. And I don't, I don't know what the reason is, but I would think that if it's collaboration and everybody's supposed to be doing the same thing, then what's happening there that's not part of the whole process?
I can, I can speak a little to what we are intentionally doing this year around professional learning and around having, Matoska having a different start and end time. We, as we think about letters and supporting that bridge to practice between, um, teachers learning, we have had an intentional effort to be able to still support Matoska teachers, even if it isn't during the time that the other teachers are able to meet together for collaboration. And so working with Cynthia Mueller, um, at, you know, who is working with us around literacy at elementary, we have worked super intentional with ensuring that they're getting that level of support that is needed for professional learning around letters and that cross collaboration among the buildings. Um, at Matoska, because of that certain end time difference and working with Jonathan, um, or John Lininger, the principal here, to, uh, make that happen. So we know, uh, that that intentionality of cross collaboration is so important, especially with professional learning and letters. So I know we're making a really, um, great effort this year because of that, those start time differences. So that's, I know that's really been a focus, um, for us around professional learning. Thank you.
I want to say that we're collaborating more than we ever have with Matoska and they absolutely are willing to collaborate. And, um, because they are ID school, I think, have often felt prior to this that they were, they had to figure it out themselves. And so they work really hard, the MCA is a, it is a difficult task because it's on one day or, and so I, while I agree with you, we wanna ask those questions, like, it's hard when any school, this happens to Willow sometime when they're singled out, because it does not reflect the work that they're doing and they absolutely are leaning into the work across. It's not resistance on their part, but they historically have been kind of left to figure it out because they have, they are an ID school, so it is a little bit nuanced. But all of the work that we're doing right now around aligning has been elementary principals leading amazing work for two years in a way that they haven't ever. And so, um, I just wanna make sure, and I know you weren't saying that, but just, but just to make sure, because when people don't have the whole story, I just, I just wanna make sure that we do that.
Okay, I also wanted to just mention that if you were to look at the scores for twenty-twenty-two, although that they they had that proficiency percentage, they did significantly increase the number of students that were partially proficient over not proficient. So clearly, some work is happening around moving students forward. Um, and also, um, as Dr. Gillespie mentioned at the beginning, when you go from one cohort of third graders to the next cohort of third graders, you you have to think about that as two separate groups of students. Um, and then we do also have, um, various starting points, right, in our schools around the district that we were talking about, working with Birch Lake. Oftentimes, when students come in, they need a higher level of support than say, some of the other schools. So, um, I I do agree that we need to ask those questions, but I also agree that this is one piece of information from one day. Yep.
And there's a, a couple of the things I I wanted to point out too, and I mean, you all know I'm a Matoska parent, so there there is that as well. But I think there are multiple schools that have the multi-age classrooms, it's not just Matoska. Um, so that's not something that I think is affecting this. If if we're looking at just straight up these numbers, and I think, you know, expecting that the International Back Laureate will somehow mean higher scores, I think, is also saying that some schools then, are we just gonna, gonna say, oh, we expect lower scores from those, that school, you know? And so I think the, and the International Back Laureate absolutely, absolutely focuses on literacy. And the part, part of the IB learner profile is also collaboration too. So I I think, I like what you said, that this is one piece of data in one day and we need to certainly, um, look into this. But I don't know that we can say that Matoska or any other school that has a. But I don't know that we can say that Matoska or any other school that has a dip like this. Isn't doing what they need to do to help our kids. So I just wanted to, to put that out there that, yes, let's look at that number. But there's a lot of factors that go into these numbers.
And our plan, the comprehensive plan around literacy is we will see results for our kids. It is, I would say it rivals anything in the state, and I am very proud of the work that we're doing. And all of our K-5 teachers getting trained in letters, I mean, all of that is humongous for our students and for our teachers. And so we are doing the work and not minimizing it at all, but I appreciate that support and we're going to keep leaning into it. Because again, all of this matters for us as a district, but it matters more about the students behind the numbers and the skills that they have. And each one of our educators and leaders know that, and that's what we lean into every single day.
All right, the next school we get to highlight is Willow.
Matt, I'll let you. You want to switch that? So the, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you guys. Different data certainly than what you saw with MCA, and I just kind of want to walk you through this because. A, it's not super big and B, you're like, what are we looking at here? But it really is directly a result of the work that we're doing in terms of tier one and tier two instruction in the classroom. So we, much similar to Birch, have kind of that inverted triangle of students that needs. What I found fascinating, though, is last year, our kindergarten teachers started to work with letters at around this time. And if you look at the graph on the top right, this is the, like our kindergartners and their early reading composite. So some of that, that information that we were just talking about, about how we built that preschool goal into kindergarten. You can see a dramatic jump in our students' ability to do early reading as a result of letters. If you've heard anything about letters, you know that the learning that our educators are doing is significant. It is a heavy cognitive load for them on top of all of the things that they do in the classroom on a daily basis. On top of communicating with parents. And when we saw this little spike in, in how things are going, we grew. From 31% in the fall to 56% in the spring as a result of some of the work that they learned about and then started to implement. On the flip side, if you look at our first grade decodable words, those three bars that you're looking at, the one on the left is the, how our students did in the fall. Red is not great and green is better. And you saw that we had some significant needs in the fall. And as a result of doing consistent tier one instruction, especially upon decodable words. In lots of different ways, you can do this through lots of different strategies, lots of different curriculum, like integrity, for instance. That's what our first grade teachers were utilizing every day that we're going through about 10 minutes of trying to, to have students understand how to decode words. Then you saw in the middle is winter, and then by the spring, you'd see that we went from a growth from 29% to 60%. Our teachers became highly effective in their instruction, they collaborated with one another. And as a result, we are seeing those second graders now, they were first grade last year, pick up with many more kids able to do some of that pre-work. That with the new board. Again, the initiative of letters is. It is a game changer. If you saw recently in the New York Times and Mississippi, who's implemented fidelity. And the nation literacy has moved from 49% or 40, the 49th state to the 29th state. As a result of the work that they have done over the course of six years with letters. Every other educator that I talked to and that has started to implement letters within the metro area. Our Minnesota Principals Academy, and we were talking about this, the game changer. I firmly believe like, what I want, I, I want our board, I want our community to take a look at our, our literacy numbers. And be, whether it's a Matoska school or a Willow school, like, ooh, that's concerning. It should be, we have fewer than 50% of our students that are proficient at that grade level. And I'm certain of it, that we will move these kids into areas that we haven't seen in quite a long time, regardless of the pandemic. So I'm really proud of the work that we did, and it's a lot of the similar work that Birch is doing. If you look at the, the things that they're doing in terms of screening to intervention. The mix of class-wide and small group interventions or instructional support, all of those things are being done throughout our elementary schools. And so I'm really proud of the work and the way that we've been supported by teaching learning and by the cabinet and, and by being able to put resources in the right place for us. So that's, it came to the achievement aspect of things from the integration side of things and, and in our report. We were able to work as a group, as a, as a staff in terms of our integrative efforts. We had a significant amount of professional development last year centered around equity, centered around making sure that our kids have integrated experiences. And how are we able to craft culturally relevant teaching practices in our classroom? So we did that over the course of a year last year, it was really the main focus of what we were trying to do. This year, our efforts focus on letters, which I will say is very equity minded. It is the right work to do, it's ensuring that kids get what they need. And then we've also become a bar school, so we're the third elementary school, we've become a bar school. And we're just in the, the process of, of becoming well-versed in that. But I'm also really excited about the potential that that has about the ways that we talked about. All of the students' natural abilities, the things, the gifts that they bring, and then that MTSS approach to ensure that they get what they need. And then finally, we want to make sure that we are trying our best to. Bring our community in, bring our families in, allow our students to thrive in and out of the classroom. And so we have a lot of unique ways that we do that at Willow. And we're always, we're, we're continuing to look for ways to reach out to other schools or to other communities. To be able to have our students experience some pretty cool things. I just wanted to highlight a few of those. The middle tank, you've heard of that, but there's some people that have participated in that, in this room. Are currently, our fourth graders are going through middle tank right now, and they are working with members from the community. They are researching. Some sort of charity effort that they want to highlight. And then they go in front of the middle tank, which is the Sharp Tank, the plane on Sharp Tank, right? And then those judges determine which charities are going to give those gifts based off the information that they receive. Jay, this town is a great way to have kids think about civic mindedness, and that's a day where we go to a place in St. Paul and, and Dominion there with me. It's, was the mayor of Jay's Town for the day, that was fun. Some of you are reading buddies, and I really appreciate any time that you're able to come into Willow and work with some of our students, and so you see that. And then also our fifth graders get to be out. And work at Donatelli's for some time. All of these things are, they're fun, but importantly, they're very enriching. They help to enrich our curriculum, they help students see themselves in, in new ways and. You know, sometimes I feel like we, we want, at Willow, we, we, we don't ever want to feel like, oh, you know. Try and give back as much as we can, and that's what we try to do daily with some of these activities. So that's what I have to say. What questions, ideas, thoughts?
Any questions for Mr. Pena? Thank you so much.
Our final spotlight is really to talk about our college and career readiness goal. And I have, I'll have my two guests introduce themselves.
Hey, I'm Cassie Lyden, I am the avid coordinator at South Penn, and I also teach the avid class elect courses here.
Carrie Crusmark, principal at Lake Gears Elementary, our avid elementary K-5.
So as we think about. So as we think about our college and career readiness goals and our high school graduation goal, I think it's important. A lot of our goals tonight talk about the college aspect of it, but we obviously know and we continue to talk about, we have a large focus on career readiness as well. So my favorite part of us at White Bear Lake is that we don't, we don't say one's better than the other, or that we really want to think about. And I've talked about this and I will continue to talk about, how are our students ready for their future outside of school? And so we want to make sure that when students, if they choose to go to college, when they leave high school, that's great. But if they don't and they want to do it later, that they're ready for that as well. So we, as we look at our goals, are, we have goals around the number of. College credit classes, it's hard to say, courses that students can earn to college credits in high school. Goals around the percentage of the student, the graduating class. And so 20% of the class of 2022 completed at least four classes. Or if you want to look at it in credits, 30% earned 12 credits. And so if you remember, we've had that goal for some time, thinking about 12 credits, college credits by 12th grade. That's a little bit of a dip from the previous years, and I would guess that is because of the impact of COVID. But we have, we did not have a chance to ask students about that. We continue to increase the number of classes that we have to offer students, we have around 55 classes now, and they range. And they absolutely hit our pathway classes as well. And we also look at the demographic representation in those classes to make sure that they are racially diverse and, and represent the racial demographics of our schools. Our school, and they, they are racially diverse and they do represent that, but we also look at making sure we don't have gaps. And so one of our goal is to make sure that if 30.6% of our white students are enrolled, that we have a similar demographic across all of our racial demographics. And so we continue to focus on that as well. We also go beyond that and think about how are students doing in classes? And so one of our achievement and integration goals is making sure that students are earning a C or higher in classes. And we specifically wrote the goal around black students. And our goal was, we started with a baseline of 76% of black students enrolled in college credit earning courses in 2019. And this year, 86.2% of students are earning a C or higher. Our goal is obviously that all students earn a C or higher, as we continue to support students being successful in class. But looking again, making sure it's not just about students enrolling in classes, that they're also seeing success. Additionally, we're, we're continuing to focus on our graduation rate. Our White Bear Lake area school's graduation rate is 91.3%. That includes our graduation rate for our alternative learning, area learning center that we're really proud of having in our district. But it's important that we talk about it and talk about what our high school graduation rate is, it's 97%. And then when we factor in the area learning center, the reason we do that is because of how we get compared with other districts. Not to minimize that, we want to make sure that we're increasing students graduating on time and understand that for some students, life throws them a few curveballs. And sometimes graduating on time doesn't happen for whatever reason. Linda gave me this, our seven, I saw it, seven-year graduation rate. Oh, it was in our, it's in here, we have like an 80% or a higher seven-year graduation rate for our area learning center, which is a really high graduation rate. And there's been a lot of talk with our state trying to get that to be the graduation rate that people talk about for area learning centers, and they just haven't had success yet with that.
I just wanted to highlight that amongst that, amongst that 97%, we had. Only one student group that was below 90%, which is huge. And that, that was special education students, and it was at 88%, which is also a very high number. If you look at special education four-year graduation rates, often they're lower than that. And that in our overall, so including our Transition Education Center and our ALC. We had no student groups below 80%. The statewide goal is no student group above, below 85%. So we are approaching that goal. So clearly, we're doing a lot of work at our high school to help students graduate, not only on time, but also prepared for whatever their next step is. And I also wanted to just mention, I know that there's a lot of alphabet soup in here. But we also, when we were calculating these, we included our, our classes that help students earn certificates. And career preparedness classes, too. So there, so just keep in mind that these numbers are not just college. I mean, they are college credits, but not just what you think of as a traditional college.
The other point to. Area of point out for our two-minute integration goals is we had a graduation goal to align with our high school graduation rate, but specifically looking at our Latinx students. 80% of our Latinx, of the class of 2019, 80% of our Latinx students graduated in four years. And our goal is to get to 96% by 2023, and for the class of 2021, we are looking at 89.1. We're on track, on track for meeting that.
And just a brief reminder, the reason we're talking about 2021 and not 2022 is because that data always legs one year. Is just remember that a student can graduate on time if they graduate before the first day of the next school year. So September 7th of 2020, 2022 was the first day of the school year. So if someone graduated that Friday before they, they count in that four-year number, and the state doesn't release that, that information till the next week. So just in case you were wondering why we're talking 2021.
Dr. Muster?
I just want to say that I always go to the transition graduation and to the ALC graduation. And I'm really proud that White Bear can be supported in so many different ways. And for kids that may be fragile or had big burdens. I think they are so well-prepared. And the pathways that the transitional program offers are amazing. I don't know how often that happens, but they have a lot of career choices and what would you call them? They're kind of internships or, and often turn into a job when they graduate, so I'm really impressed.
So the program that we, I wanted to highlight is our ABAID program. We have visited quite frequently, but they just had the honor and I will let them talk about it, but they were able to host some visitors. And so we are a K-12 ABAID district and proud of that, super proud of the work that they're doing. And often we think of ABAID as solely the ABAID elective, and ABAID elective is huge, but we are school-wide ABAID focused. So I, I will show.
Carrie, you want to start with your morning?
Sure. So it's, that's Tuesday. The, last Tuesday, we got the opportunity to host about 25. Educators from various states, Wisconsin, Illinois, Indiana, Washington, Oregon. Quite a few places as well. To allow these educators who are going through a training to become district level type. Not trainers, they were leadership, going back to help implement or support their programs. But to give them a taste of what ABAID looks like in the elementary school and. I always ask Gina from ABAID, our representative, what other schools have K-5 ABAID, and she never can give me a school. So I know there's a few out there, but it's one of these rarities. So it's something I'm really proud of, I think, for White Bear. Of course, I'm proud because I'm a little biased that White Bear is awesome and best school, but it is, it's. Several classrooms to see ABAID in action, two kindergarten classrooms in the fall. And kindergarten in the fall, if you've been there or have had your own kindergarten, you see them by November, you see them in January. They are completely different little beings because they've grown so much. But for them to do ABAID strategies that scaffold them is simply amazing. And of course, then we have some fifth graders as well, the second graders doing different ABAID strategies. The people who visit are just, it's a great opportunity for them to see and for us to show off the work that the kids can do. And so much of it was fun as well because of the vertical alignment that we developed. They were able to see a few things that, oh, this is what this looks like, that strategy kindergarten, but now I get to see it at fifth grade. Boy, that'd be quite a span, but to be able to see how it can work. Sometimes we scratch our head and we're not sure how we can make something work at a younger level, and then within a couple of days, the teachers come back and say, I got it figured out. So it was really, really a fun opportunity to highlight three things that were.
Mr. Crusmark, you want to talk about the top picture and how we brought in student voice?
So another case we did at the end of the tour, the showcase, the student panel came in, and we had a group of mostly fifth graders. And they were able to share some questions that were asked of them around. And they were able to share some questions that were asked of them around, what's one of the best things you like about Avid? And it's funny, you know, in here, in front of these adults, they're nervous, but they grasp right to something that's really, really like concrete. And so the Avid mind, with some prompting, we were able to actually explain a lot of fun things about, it's not just organizing and keeping that papers in one space. So my teachers happy, but engaging with that tool. I think one of our colleagues, we forced it like with focus notes and really, you know, going back to multiple times adding to sharing, having my colleague or my partner in class add to my notes, ask questions. The quicker binder that we use or having binder is something that is very engaging. The kids also were able to share some of their favorite strategies that is around Socratic seminar, being able to talk and debate, especially when you get most kids love to talk, especially for the fifth graders and they just pick a topic that's passionate. And they go back and forth with that work that they have to do. So it's fun to have them share their firsthand experience with these adults.
So then the group came to South Campus after they toured Lake Year's. And we had kind of a similar setup. We first brought them into different classrooms. They saw Sarah Atkins and her astronomy class, Stacy Batzgalupo and her literature class, Carrie Fern and her Spanish class and Alex Carlson and his social studies class. So they were able to see Avid strategies working in different content areas in different ways. Some of my Avid seniors actually serve as tour guides and they walked the groups from space to space, explaining to them who they were going to be seeing and what they were going to be seeing in that space and kind of kept track of time for them. And then we came back to a common space together where the group was able to have a panel discussion with with our, one of our math and chemistry center tutors, who is also an Avid tutor, our English language teacher, Robert Anderson, Troy Strand, our instructional coach, and then a couple of Avid and non-Avid students as well, which was really great to have a voice from students that see Avid strategies in their classrooms, but aren't Avid students themselves. And then they, after having an opportunity to talk with that group, they were able to observe my Avid 12 classroom and a collaborative study group that was occurring. And the feedback that we got from the group that visited was just phenomenal. Like they were just very, very impressed by our district's commitment to the program and some of the things that we have aligned. One of the things that was really impressive to them was our math and chemistry center. And those tutors also working with our Avid students. The Avid students on the panel did a spectacular job of answering questions about the Avid program and how it has impacted them as students and their college and career readiness. And I was blown away. I was like a proud mom moment. So it was, it was just a very, very successful day. And it was awesome to be able to highlight a lot of the work that we've been doing in this district with our Avid.
So what question might you have? Avid is one of, we also BAR, we will be back next month to talk slowly about BAR. BAR is another huge initiative that we have aligned with Avid and BAR. What do you think about research and continuing to impact students? We're doing the work. Just keep keep studying what we're doing.
Any questions about Avid? Ms. Thompson.
Do we have a breakdown of students that take Avid on the secondary level by, you know, racial and ethnic? Breakdown of that, that I, somebody could share with us at some point?
Yes. And we actually do data every November and we submit a report to the Avid programming, looking at our schoolwide versus our Avid breakdown in all. Melinda loves to meet her this time of year.
I'm excited to have it in the elementary level because I know by the time I realized what Avid was and I wanted my older daughter to get into the program, she had a negative connotation of what Avid was all about. So it, she was like, I don't want to be in that group or whatever. And I, and to me, it was like, she needed help with all the organization and having that book and having somebody there that says, you know, in this class, you need to do and help me, help you get, you know. So I saw that benefit and she didn't at that point. So I like that we're starting it on that elementary level because I think it's so important for kids to learn how to be organized and stay on top of things and then, and to have that, you know, breakdown by second, elementary, it's probably by the subjects they're learning. And to say, well, this is the area where I need some help for. And that just be able to easily open up your little book and say, you know, help me here, this is where I need it. And to have them working together. I like that we're doing it on the elementary level. Well, that's great.
I'm, I'm going to comment to the fact that we are moving schoolwide to all teachers utilizing strategies and all students being Avid has really, I think, helped break down some of that barrier as well as Avid is this label, this thing.
Yeah, whatever. Yeah. I didn't want to put a label on it. Yeah, I knew, I knew that it wasn't that, but I, I like that we're starting it in the elementary so that they can know it right from the beginning and say, oh, no, this is actually a helpful tool in my educational process.
Ms. Boyd.
So you're a ninth grader. If you didn't take it in eighth grade, can you take it in the ninth grade? If you're a 10th grader, if you did take it in the ninth grade. So how do you, how do they learn? Because then some kids are getting way ahead of the others sometimes just learning, how do you can bridge them?
Yeah. So I, I live with my kids from 11 to 12. And so I, I mean, I know them as 11 graders and then 12 graders. And so it's, it's great that like when I have kids joining in 10th or 12th grade that weren't 11 graders, I know how to pair up my students in different capacities to help support some of that learning that needs to occur. Also, I am really fortunate that my tutors that I work with are just phenomenal. I've worked with students in tons of different capacities. And so at the beginning of the school year on our tutorial CSG days, they actually pulled those groups aside and worked with them on how to do that process. And then we sort of integrated them with the kids that had been doing it for many, many years. And we, we do interview, so the kids have to apply and have to interview to make sure they're fit in Avid. We do a lot of data checking to make sure that they are the right fit. And so I think all those things kind of help ensure success. And then even because we do allow kids to join at any grade, I do a lot of community building at the start of the year to continue that skill. And so every Friday, we have activities that allow students to talk with each other about themselves, about things they are excited about, things they care about, and then do like challenges and things like that together to, you know, build some.
Dr. Muster.
I just want to say I'm glad that it has spread. And I saw it starting back when I was at North Campus. And it might've been a certain milk taking technique or something like that, that just kind of went across the curriculum. Because a lot of kids that are following the other elective can't do Avid is a unique class. So they have to eliminate their world language or their jazz or their orchestra or, you know, whatever arts they're following. And that was my kids. But I liked the fact that the structure and support is spread so well, it sounds like now through the secondary as well as beginning in the elementary grades. Because I think all kids, when they go to college, are going to need that sort of structure. And some kids, it, what I saw with the kids at Norton was the ones that were in Avid class. It wasn't, wasn't just we're doing added strategies. They're applying them to whatever they're learning. And it's really a support, a scaffold for whatever their classes are they're taking. So it's got multiple ways it helps kids. Thanks.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to our only operational item.
I'm not going to go, I was going to ask some questions about the advisory in the slide that was on the.
Oh, do you mean the, the progress report?
Yeah.
Um, yes, Ms. Thompson.
Um, because I was looking, so this committee is part of our requirements to be in the achievement and integration report from MDE. So in looking at this list, I don't want to assume, but I did do a little research and there's, I believe there's guidelines that say that what the diversity of the committee has to be. And one of the things that I found in the state, you know, guidelines is that the district, if we have this group and we have an APAC in our district, that an APAC member needs to be on this committee. And I don't see an APAC number on this committee. And I also didn't see like, in previous years, we had for 2021, I don't know if it was the actual percentages for for our students enrolled in AP courses and such. In 2021, did we get a report? And I believe in that report, American Indian students were included at 25%. And I did not see a number for them in this one. And I also didn't see an updated number for like their graduation rates. And so I was just wondering about that because of those part of requirement.
So again, when our cell size is small, we can't always publicly report that information, but we do have those numbers.
And so again, on the committee though, there should be an APAC member parent, somebody on the actual committee. At least that's what it says in the state bench.
We can double check on the invite list, that's our systems accountability. So we might've just put some people who attended, but if we didn't, if we missed an invite, we'll make sure that we fix that. But that is the committee that we've used, has always been the world's best workforce then that changed the to the systems accountability. And so the membership from systems accountability includes, you know, the people that it should, but we can make sure that includes who we need to. But it was, if we over, it was an oversight, it wasn't intentional and we'll make sure that we do that.
Well, because I just figured that maybe Buck Wayway would be a good person to have on there because like on the plan form, it, it literally has the plan input for American Indian parent advisory. And then there's the statutes and the guidelines for what to do to include them in this plan. So I just didn't see any update on that information in there. And I just wanted to make sure that was forgiven that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we will move on to our operational item C1, action on medical insurance carrier and insurance rates.
Good evening Chair Ellison and members of the school board. Thank you for having me tonight. My name is Cindy Gustafson and I'm the Assistant Director of Human Resources. District administration in consultation with our insurance advisors, along with our district insurance advisory committee, is seeking approval tonight of the following changes to our employees' insurance plans. These changes will be effective on January 1st, 2023. The first is a change in our third party administrator for our self-funded health plan to Health Partners. Second, establish renewal rates for our medical hospitalization coverage, reflecting an increase of 3.5%. This will support the advisory committee's goal of maintaining a healthy reserve balance for the upcoming year. And the third piece is that we recommend keeping the dental insurance rates the same as they have been in this previous year. We appreciate you taking a look at this tonight as we do have our employee open enrollment coming up in early November. Starts on November 9th to give our employees plenty of time to look at what's available for them and make the proper selections for them. And then the time for us to get all of those into our system before these changes take effect on January 1st. So again, thank you for taking a look at all of this tonight. And so I would ask approval of the recommended changes and I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Cindy, I have one quick question. Is it 3.5% or 3.75?
I'm sorry, 3.75.
Gotcha. The numbers are calculated, I'm assuming, using pre-75.
That is correct, 3.75%. Yeah, thank you.
So you've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve?
Come on.
A motion by Ms. Thompson and a second. Second by Ms. Boyd. Any questions or comments for? I have, I have one real quick question. So the carrier, then we're switching from preferred one to Health Partners, that is right. And we're confident that all of our staff will be able to continue without any hiccups their coverage in the networks that they are already using?
Correct. Our insurance advisor did take a look and it's like 99.2% of carriers would move between the networks very easily. And we would work with anyone that's impacted to help them make sure that they can find that any type of services that they may need. So preferred one was purchased by United Health. So we were going to be seeing a change anyway. There is less disruption with Health Partners than there would have been with the company that purchased preferred one.
Okay, so then when open enrollment starts, you said early November?
Correct.
Then they can start to go in and look at all of their, their tiers and see where they can continue their health, like continue with their current providers, et cetera.
Right. So they would be looking at, we have a HRA plan and an HSA, health reimbursement or a health savings plan. They could choose that. They would be looking at single or family coverage. Those types of things are what they're selecting during the open enrollment process.
Okay, great. Thank you. Ms. Boyd.
I know we saw our reserves go up after during pandemic. So how does that compare with what this 35% that we're trying to maintain?
So to be honest, we're right about at 35% now and that's what we're hoping to maintain. And we do feel this increase will keep us right there at where we want to be.
So have we seen this past year, just the jump in planes?
Wouldn't say huge, but an increase for sure over where we had been.
Yeah, in the last month, we saw a little bit of a jump. So this is a wise decision as we, you know, we do have that little bit of cushion there. So if we have a bad acre, then we're prepared for it. But we're, we're increasing our revenue of the plan that we think
Any other questions? All right, this will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Arcand. Lloyd.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
No master.
Aye.
Thompson, aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you. And we are now on to adjournment. So I would ask for a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Dr. Arcand, and a second.
Right.
Second by Ms. Boyd. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign.
You're adjourned. And a question about and there, what we're going to do.